Okay. Everybody?
I'm gonna go.
Okay. Good evening. Call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum. And tonight, our pledge of allegiance will be led by fifth grade student from Salem Avenue, Pacey Bahana Grove. So please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So Pacey, would you like to introduce anyone that's here with you this evening?
Well, this is my Nana. And then I have the principal.
Mr. Garner. Anyone else?
Missed one else.
In the back.
And we were talking beforehand, and I told you that I hope social studies would be your favorite class at Salem Avenue, since I used to teach social studies, but I have a feeling it's probably not. What is your favorite class?
Reading.
Reading. Well, that's part of social studies, and that's good. Any other board members?
Pacey, your class is in outdoor school right now. So you came all the way down just to do the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are you having a good time?
Yes.
And who's up there with you this week? Who's special? Took a vacation.
My Nana.
Your Nana. That's right. Nice Nana.
So what do you like to do, Pacey, when your time's off? When you're just relaxing?
I like to play on my tablet, play with my sisters, go outside, and sometimes I like to go shopping.
Shopping. There you go. Good job.
Do you play any sports?
I used to play soccer.
Soccer? Anyone else?
I have a question for Casey. Do you have any favorite books?
Um, no.
Do you like robots? Thank you for coming today, Casey.
You're welcome.
If you'd have seen the look she gave you, I'd tell you, I don't know. Okay. We were kidding in the back. We called him Sheldon after the guy in The Big Bang Theory. He did that one night. Came out as a robot. Well, Pacey, thank you for coming, and you did an excellent job, and enjoy your time at outdoor school.
Absolutely.
Dr. Michael?
Okay. Members of the board and members of the public, as well as our audience this evening. We do have a new piece of technology we're displaying this evening. Mr. Bickford volunteered today to be our, I guess, take advantage of the opportunity to report here to the meeting. We have four of these robots. The staff applied for a grant and received a $15,000 grant, and we secured four of these robots. We've added the iPads to the robots. The purpose of them is for home instruction students. We have students that have been in accidents or students that have various, you know, challenges, medical challenges, things like that. And particularly for those students that are in classes that are difficult to replicate if you're not there in the room, it's hard for a home instruction teacher to go out and share calculus or some high-end course or particular CTE class or something like that. So we have four of these robots. We're going to use those with students that are in home and hospitalization. We've already started using one. So, Mr. Bickford, I know that you just saw this thing in the last hour. So he's been driving this, working this, and actually had supper in the meantime for only a few minutes. So I don't know if you want to share your initial reaction to this? Might have to turn that way so people can see. Turn to the audience a little bit.
I'm amazed how incredibly easy it is to use. It took maybe two minutes of training. I'm literally behind a laptop, and I'm using my arrow keys to do things like raise the robot. You can see better. And even going down the hall and maneuvering around chairs was, you know, takes a little bit of doing, but I can imagine, even just a day of this, I can imagine a student getting really, really good at maneuvering a school. So it's really impressive.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Again, this is an opportunity for our home and hospitalization students. It's not a toy. It's intended to be. The child will physically be in the room, but the robot would be in the room. The child can ask questions. The child can hear the instructor. Child could participate in a group if students were working together. I think our students won't pay any attention to it. I mean, they obviously will recognize it's not their friend, being right there, but I think it would be almost like a social media piece in a way. And I think it's just going to offer new opportunities for our students. So, Mr. Bickford, thank you for helping us out tonight and sharing that. He'll be joining us in just a second.
Ta-da!
Back to you, Mr. Stotler.
Okay. Well, now move for approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I move for approval of tonight's agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President, Mr. Vice President, I move to amend the agenda to add, under new business, a recommendation to approve the construction contract for the New Shores Elementary School.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor? It's six zero, and a student member concurs. Will now move for the approval of the amendments.
No, you need to approve the amended agenda.
Pardon me?
You need to approve the amended agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. I've only done this two times. So move for the approval of the amended agenda.
So move.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Again, unanimous, student member concurs. Approval of the amendments?
At this time, I move for the approval of the work session minutes dated Tuesday, October 2nd, 2018.
Second?
Second.
Any additions or corrections? All in favor? Six, nothing. Go ahead.
I'd like for the approval of the closed session minutes dated Tuesday, October 2nd, 2018.
Second?
Second.
Any additions or corrections? All in favor? Six, zero.
And finally, I'll move for the approval of the business minutes dated Tuesday, October 2nd, 2018.
Second.
Is there a second? Any additions or corrections? All in favor? Six, zero, and a student member concurs. And now, Dr. Michael?
We have four recognitions tonight. We're going to do these a little bit different than we do them sometime. Some have each of the presenters come up, share a little bit about what the recognition's going to be. When we complete all four announcements of the recognitions, I'm actually going to ask the board members to go down front, and then we'll ask each group to call their recipients forward to receive their certificate. We'll hold a group, and we'll take a group picture. So the first one is National School Lunch Week is this week, and at this time, I'd like to call on Mr. Emley to come forward and to share a little bit about that and the guests he has with him, and we'll be sharing in honor with her in just a few minutes.
Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Michael, student representative. It's an honor to be here tonight to talk about National School Lunch Week. President John F. Kennedy created National School Lunch Week in 1962. During this annual week-long celebration, school nutrition association members, students around the country celebrate in their cafeterias with decorations, special menus, events, and more. The 2018 National School Lunch Week theme is "School Lunch: Lots to Love." Our school food service professionals serve lots of love each day. The National School Lunch program serves more than 30 million children every single day, and that's something to love. This year, WCPS Food Nutrition Services is celebrating by asking principals to involve students to create celebration of the National School Lunch Week. For example, Western Heights Middle School Life Skills students worked hard to create artwork to display in the cafeteria. Jonathan Heger students used the National School Lunch Week coloring book, colored pictures to display. And Boonsborough Elementary students made posters and were proudly pointing out to cafeteria staff which poster that they created themselves. On Friday, we'll be handing out stickers to everyone that buys lunch in honor of the week. You know, each day, I'm amazed at the work that I see and hear in the cafeterias. I've been doing this for 18 years, and each year, the dedication is just amazing. We have a very dedicated, hardworking, caring team, and they put a lot of love into every meal that they serve to our staff and students. Tonight, I'm honored to have Jan Klopfer, satellite leader Cascade Elementary, represent the department. Jan is the longest-tenured employee with 29-plus years. Jan started as a substitute at E. Russell Hicks, and in 1989, she became a food service assistant, spent two years as a food service assistant before later becoming a satellite leader. With 29-plus years, Jan has certainly served a lot of love on those trays. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Emley. In a few minutes, we'll be honoring you. At this time, I'd like to call forward Brian Johnson. Next week is National School Bus Safety Week, and obviously, we won't have a board meeting next week, but I wanted Mr. Johnson to share just briefly about that and to honor our bus drivers.
Good evening. I'm honored to be here to recognize our bus drivers, bus assistants, contractors, and crossing guards who are often the very first to greet our students in the morning and often the very last to see them in the afternoon. I want to read briefly the governor's proclamation for National School Bus Safety Week. Whereas it is fitting that Maryland citizens recognize that 7,210 yellow school buses transport daily 631,000 students to Maryland schools representing 71% of the total student population. And whereas Maryland has 9,027 school bus drivers employed by local school systems that must achieve special training prior to earning their school bus driver's endorsement issued by the Maryland Department of Motor Vehicle Administration, with an additional six hours of in-service training given during the school year. And whereas during the year, these fleets cover over 125,514,000 miles and operate in all types of weather conditions and have an outstanding safety record despite the ever-present danger of cars running their safety lights. And whereas Maryland is pleased to join the nation in recognizing school bus safety in all of our 23 counties and Baltimore City and the hard work that our school bus drivers do keeping Maryland students safe. Here today with me, representing the 200 employees that operate our school buses, crossing guards, school bus attendants, is Linda White, who has been serving as a school bus driver for 36 years since 1982. Thank you very much.
We're going to be honoring you in just a few minutes. So at this time, I'd like to call Robin Handler forward. Two recognitions she wants to bring to our attention. First one's going to be 2017-18 School of the Year Awards for Maryland Center for Character Education, and that'll be followed by PBIS awards.
Good evening. Next week is Character Counts Week, when we recognize all of our students who are responsible and ready to learn and respectful in our schools, and they will receive pencils in elementary school for Character Counts Week as well. But right now, I'd like to proudly recognize our schools through the Maryland Center for Character Education at Stevenson University held their annual awards program in partnership with the Maryland State Department of Education, Character.org, and the Maryland Center for Character Education at Stevenson University that recognized 64 Maryland schools. The award program recognizes schools that demonstrate an outstanding character education initiative yielding positive results in student behavior, school climate, and academic performance. It's a pleasure to share that we had 16 Washington County schools recognized as 2017-18 School of the Year recipients. The purpose of Maryland's Positive Behavior Intervention and Support Recognition Program is to acknowledge schools that have implemented exemplary school-wide programs. To receive an award, schools must meet specific criteria established by the Maryland State Department of Education. I would now like to recognize our recipients for PBS recognition.
And Rob, you'll just give us one second.
Yes.
We're ready for the board to go down, and she'll call in and forward.
Bronze Award, Lincolnshire Elementary School. This was Lincolnshire's first year as a PBS school.
Congratulations. We're going to keep you up here. Try and picture your people.
Hickory Elementary Silver Award. Our Gold Award recipients, Boonsborough Middle School. Clear Spring Middle School. Fountaindale Elementary School. Rockland Woods Elementary. Smithburg Elementary School. Springfield Middle. And now, it's a pleasure to honor our 16 schools of character. Bestra Elementary School. Oh, hold it. I'm just so excited, I can't control myself.
A lot of characters are celebrating. So we're going to ask all of you to come around here. We don't have air tonight to kind of get us organized with our pictures, so we have to do the best we can if you're up here on the board.
We're welcome. Will, you have it.
Congratulations.
And now, I will recognize the 16, and I keep repeating 16, because we had the most School of the Year recipients of any county in the state of Maryland. I must add, and I'm very proud. Clear Spring Middle.
Thank you.
Emma K. Dowell Elementary School. Pleasant Valley Elementary. Potomac Heights Elementary. Sharpsburg Elementary School. Williamsport Elementary.
Here to receive our certificate again is Linda White, in recognition of her 36 years of service as a school bus driver.
All of everything you do. Thank you so much.
Thank you, George.
Thank you, Miles. I would probably to the moon and back.
A few times.
Is that right? It's been a few miles. Appreciate it. Hello there.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Right in the middle.
That concludes my portion of this report. I think I'm back on the agenda a little bit later. Thank you. Thanks, everyone, for coming.
It's, excuse me. Now time for public comment. We do have four individuals who have signed up ahead of time to speak. I will read to you a portion of Board Policy KD addressing a public comment. I will read to you a portion of Board Policy KD addressing a public comment. Excuse me. Each person wishing to address the Board of Education is encouraged but not required to sign up prior to the meeting and may address any topic concerning Washington County Public Schools except personnel or student matters which clearly identify an individual or individuals. Each speaker may speak up for up to five minutes. And Mr. Bickford, alias Mr. Robot, will be our timekeeper. Would you like to explain your...
Thirty seconds left. I hold up a yellow, and then when I hold up red, just please wrap up your comments.
Okay, thank you. Our first speaker has signed up is Anne Marie Hines.
Good evening. My name is Anne Marie Hines, and I'm president of the WC ESP Association. We represent over four hundred support staff in Washington County, which includes our dedicated custodial and maintenance staff. I'm here today to acknowledge the school board members for listening and considering the concerns of our members on the proposed custodial restructuring plan. I'm sure as board members you have heard from numerous custodians, teachers, and parents about this issue, as have I. While this situation is not yet resolved, we appreciate the step back to reconsider the devastating effects that the current proposed plan would have on staff, the impact on school cleanliness and safety, and the overall morale of WCPS employees. We recognize the work yet to be done to resolve this issue entirely, and we hope for continued dialogue to that end. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and Dr. Michaels. My name is Ruth Lushbaugh. I am the head custodian at Emma K. Dowell Elementary. I would like to take this time to thank each and every one of the board members in delaying this decision on the reorganization of the custodial staff. This means a lot to us. Our fellow, my fellow custodians and I, thank you wholeheartedly. There, I wanted to tell you all something. November of this year, I'll be with the Board of Education for thirty-one years. Eighteen years as a bus driver, three years as a custodian at Tech High, and the remainder of the time at Emma K. Dowell Elementary. Over these years, there's one thing that's always happened. All the administrators talk at us, not to us. And I think it's time that things change. We can make this organization one of the best school systems in the state of Maryland, but we need to work together. The food services, the bus drivers, our maintenance department, and our custodial staff, I feel is very essential to this school system. And we need each other to make this the best school system there is. So I'm hoping in the future, we all can start talking to each other and getting ideas from everybody to make it a good, safe environment for our students. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
My name is BJ Ross. I'm a senior at South Hursttown High School. I would like to say thank you for leaving Donnie Gere and Mel Vois at South Hursttown High School because I enjoy working with them every day. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And next is Brian. Next is Brian Brown.
Good evening. My name is Brian Brown, and I'm a senior at Washington County Technical High School, and I'm a member of the Parent Educator Student Organization. I'm here today to advocate for my peers and those who will come after me. I'm sorry, I lost my place. This, I would like to address the subject of student-teacher relationships. This is a subject that I hold near and dear to my heart because education cannot move forward in a positive direction if we do not address this. How can students connect to a great and positive future if we do not have good connection with those who will help us get there? Teachers are a very key part of a good education, and we need teachers to have a positive attitude towards their jobs and us in order for education to excel in the right direction. When the teachers face conflict, even in the classroom, we need to have good communication skills with them and vice versa. Therefore, we need to put restorative practices into action. That way, students and teachers can create a positive environment even in the midst of conflict and restore relationships when conflict intervenes. That way, the conflict between a student and the teacher will not affect the whole class and impact and make a negative impact on the whole classroom. We also need to make our school environment better by adding more guidance counselors. Sometimes, students are going to need guidance that teachers cannot provide. Therefore, we need guidance counselors on hand for those students. In my time in high school, I've learned that in life, students need guidance, and student guidance leads to good outcome. And that is what students need to have good outcome, is just a little bit of guidance. I'll be graduating in high school soon, and I want all of those who will come after me to have a fair and equal chance with good resources and good people helping them. In closing remarks, I thank you for your time, and let's work forward towards a brighter future today for the youth in Washington County. Thank you. God bless you.
Those are our four announced speakers at this time. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward and speak?
Good evening, Vice President Stauffer, Dr. Michael, members of the board. My name is Carlos Malat, and I am here in support of and to advocate for our social workers, counselors, and the school counseling program. According to Frederick County Local Health Improvement Plan by the Behavioral Health Work Group, in 2014, Washington County had 5,785 emergency department visits that were related to mental health disorders. In 2018, according to this study, Washington County has 480 mental health providers. Concerning addictions-related conditions, Washington County had 1,833 emergency room visits in 2014, while Frederick had 1,152. According to the October 2nd work session documents, the amount of neonatal abstinence syndrome referrals has been increasing since 2014. And according to Meredith Medical Center, nearly three children a week are born addicted to opioids. Counselors and social workers do so much and work very hard to meet the needs of our students. We have approximately fifteen special education social workers and three non-special education social workers. Although we have counselors in every school and itinerant social workers, not all of them are full-time in a building. And that is challenging because children have needs and challenges every day of the week, not just half of the time. Aside from helping to improve student behaviors, attendance, and social development, counselors also provide immediate short-term interventions and run small groups of students. Our counselors at the secondary level also spend time on testing, which can take them away from the other duties that I just mentioned. As the needs of our students in our community expand, so should our mental health services. There should be a full-time counselor in every school, along with a social worker and any other mental health services that can be provided to meet these needs. Last year, my son came home from school and was feeling upset. I told him that I was always here for him, and that at school, if he was having problems, he could still go to the social worker or the counselor. He said his counselor was probably too busy with scheduling and testing and probably wouldn't have the time. I know that his counselor would drop anything for a student in need, but it's heartbreaking when a student says that he believes that no adult has time to listen or to help them resolve their problems. This is not the fault of the counselor, but rather a reflection of how roles have changed, how needs have increased, and how staff members are asked to do more with less. Also, last year at my son's school, the need was so high that students took it upon themselves, with the help of staff, to organize a mental health fair at the school to stop the stigma of mental health and suicide. We need to address mental health as well as the effects of opioid addiction in our community and our schools. Our counselors and social workers do the very best they can with the resources they are given, but quite frankly, they're not given enough. For these reasons, I would like to respectfully request that the superintendent and elected Board of Education consider adding staffing positions to the budget to help with the burden of testing responsibilities, to ensure that there is a full-time counselor at every school, to add social worker positions, and to look closely at the counselor-student ratio at some of our schools. The accepted counselor-to-student ratio is one counselor for every 250 students, or at least that's how I understand. Tech High has 603 students with one counselor. Salem Avenue has 737 students with one social worker. Jonathan Hager has 409 students, one social worker, and one counselor. Bestra Elementary has one counselor and one social worker for 608 students. And Pangborn Elementary has one counselor and 745 students. Finally, I would like to encourage all staff, students, and parents who are watching this meeting to participate in the process. I invite you to attend Board of Education meetings to be informed, as well as to advocate for adequate staffing and programming to meet the needs of our students. But I also encourage you to engage at the commissioner level to ensure that our school budget is fully funded, as our students deserve better than low effort. And finally, I just want to thank all of you for your service, and I would like to thank the teachers, cafeteria workers, custodians, paras, and administrators and staff at CES for all the hard work that you do for students every day. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John. I'm actually going to kind of reiterate a few of the points that the last speaker made regarding school counselors. I'm a parent of two great kids. I love our school system. Washington County Public Schools is absolutely amazing, as far as I'm concerned. I'm a middle schooler, I have an elementary schooler. At one of their schools, though, as far as the school counselor goes, we only have a part-time counselor. That strikes me as odd. Students go to school to learn, but they also go to school to develop. They become full-fledged citizens after their school career, and sometimes that process can be tricky. There are bumps, there are bruises along the way, and if there's only a counselor there every other day, problems don't just happen every other day. For instance, last year, we had a student in our class whose father died suddenly. Tragic. Some of the students had a hard time wrapping their head around it, and it would have been great if this school counselor had been there to help them through that process on the day that it happened, but they weren't. The teacher had to explain to the students what happened and had to answer questions and deal with that. Yes, it was disruptive to their day, and the teacher handled it very, very well. But it really should have been the counselor. And yes, the counselor took care of it the next day when they were there. But timeliness can be the key. I only ask that in the future, when we are considering budgets, that we look at that, that we look at what we can put into our school systems to make sure that we have all of the resources at all of the schools that we need. If we put minimum resources into our schools, we can expect minimum output. That's just simple math. So moving forward, please do what you can to get the monies that we can to make those positions available. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Stan. With respect, we need the name of the speaker. We need the name.
Yeah, he did give his full name.
John.
What's your last name?
Paul. AJ. Hello. Thank you.
Is there anyone else at this time who wishes to speak? Okay. Board member comments to response to the public comment?
I would just like to say thank you to everyone that spoke this evening. You all had very valid points, and I especially want to thank the two students who spoke this evening. It's not easy to get up here and speak in front of a lot of people, and you did a very good job, and you both had very valid points, and I want to thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments this evening. Okay, there is no old business, new business. Time for the consent agenda. Mr. Bickford, welcome.
Good evening, Vice President Stauffer, members of the board, Dr. Michael. Tonight, I have two items for your review. These items were reviewed and are being recommended for approval by the Purchasing Review Committee, and staff is available if you have any additional questions.
Any questions? No questions?
Mr. Vice President, I move to approve the award and procurement for Sharpsburg Elementary School Testing and Inspection Services to Hillis Karns Engineering Associates, Inc., at a cost of $48,746.35, and grade twelve English-language arts literature text with print and digital resources to Houghton Mifflin Harcourt at a cost of $95,094.38.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Any questions for Mr. Bickford? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of accepting the consent agenda? Six, nothing. Board member concurs. Thank you.
Second item.
Yes.
An action item for the construction of the Sharpsburg Elementary School replacement. Staff is recommending Wayne's Bar Construction Incorporated at a total cost of $21,752,700. And staff is available if you have any additional questions.
Need a motion? File for a motion.
Mr. President, or Mr. Vice President, I move to award the contract for construction of the new Wayne's, Wayne's, yeah, excuse me, new Sharpsburg Elementary Replacement School, bid number 2018-23 to Wayne's Bar Construction Company, Inc., in the amount of $21,752,700.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Questions for the gentleman?
I have one.
How does this compare to what's been budgeted?
As you can see in the cover sheet, the cost is $429,300 under the estimated budget for this project. And with that award, we're also accepting all of the alternates. So this bid, with the exception of one, this bid was designed in a way that there were things that were left off that if we had budget considerations to make, we could easily pick and choose from that list. We're under budget. We're selecting the items that we believe positively impacted the education and the functionality of the school.
Anyone else? Okay, call for the vote. All those in favor of accepting the motion for the awarding of the contract? Six, nothing. Student member concurs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now, back to Dr. Michael.
Thank you, Vice President Stauffer. A few other reports this evening. First of all, an elementary computational thinking report. Dr. Pugh and John French, and I believe she's brought some other staff with her, to share a little bit about an exciting opportunity we have for our students. A priority we made last year was we wanted to expand computational thinking, elementary, middle, and high school, and tonight, we're having our elementary report, and I think they'll, it'll be very insightful. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Pugh. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here. We're excited to bring you our elementary computational thinking, planning, the design, the thinking behind it, and...
the thinking behind it, and some representatives who've had a chance to participate in it. So, as we've been talking about elementary computational thinking as a literacy for all of our students, the design was to put into place a process that would require students to decompose problems, use mathematics and computational thinking to find solutions, use abstractions, try problems, fail, and try again, and ultimately coming up with a way to automate processes more quickly, just like you would in the real world for a lot of problem-solving that is occurring right now. So Jonna French and her mighty team got together and put together a plan, which she will share with you tonight.
What you're seeing on the slide here is the scaffolded lesson plans that we put together for the elementary. As you can see, it's pre-K through grade five, so pre-reader through advanced. And what we did was we selected a lot of materials from code.org, which is a free resource that is available. We kind of handpicked what we thought were the most appropriate, given the timeframe that we had during library media classes. These include a mixture of what we call plugged and unplugged lessons, because we want the students to be able to transfer knowledge from doing it not on a device over to when they do the computational thinking on a device. We've also embedded into these lessons various literature, so books and stories that relate to the topic, research skills when and where it was appropriate, digital citizenship, and also math, science, and our library-specific goals. We've also focused on doing the decomposition, pattern recognition, abstraction, and algorithms. We'll continue to refine these lessons over the course of this year and build additional lessons that we can add into the mix for next year. What we did was we have purchased materials for every elementary school. What you're seeing on the slide here, every school got a Code and Go robot mouse, Botley the coding robot, Kiva STEMfinity bundles, Lego WeDo core kits, microbits, Sphero Sparks, and we also purchased a series of interactive eBooks, so that every child could have access to those books as well. Library media specialists will provide professional development in August, and then we'll be having ongoing PD throughout the rest of the year. What you're seeing in this slide is pictures of students who are actually participating in the computational thinking lessons. The feedback has been very positive, which you will hear from some parents and students tonight. In these particular photos, you see Rockland Woods and Sharpsburg students using the Lego WeDo kits and some of the Code and Go mouse kits as well. Both of the Code and Go mouse is also available at the primary level at Ruth Amunro and Funkstown, so we're trying to start this as early as we can. In this particular set of photos, you see Bester Elementary students who are learning the basics on how to use Botley, the coding robot, and the remote. What they will do is they will advance beyond the just basic learning of how to manipulate the robot, to being able to move around objects and code the robot to perform simple tasks. In this video, we have primary-level students at Sharpsburg Elementary that are programming the mouse to follow a series of commands, up, down, left, right, back and forth, things like that, to get to the cheese. See if we can get it to play. Okay, maybe.
Technology, you know they're supposed to be playing this right now?
Hopefully. Well, what you would see in this initial video is they code, oh, see, they're gonna play it. Somebody moved the mouse, and it wasn't me. It's a robot. There we go.
Well, it looks like it's not going to, it looks like it's buffering, it's freezing on us. Basically, the students, on the mouse, there are a series of buttons that say up, down, left, right, and they have to program it in the sequence of the steps that it needs to get from its origination point to where the cheese is. So you would hear them talking through one forward, one forward, turn, turn, and things like that. So the next video that we have, actually, the initial programming did not work. The mouse actually would have bounced off of the one barrier that is there, and instead, what they do now is, in this next video, they were troubleshooting, and they were saying, "Well, why didn't it work? What did we need to do differently?" So basically, decomposing that problem and trying to figure out what the correct steps would be to get the mouse to get from one point to the other. So that was a really cute video. Unfortunately, we aren't going to be able to have you see that. One of the things that we're also doing at the elementary level is with the cooperation of the Science Department and with the Planetarium staff, we have put together, and the Technology Education staff, we have put together STEM kits. Basically, these are a series of materials that we have developed, science-related lessons that accompany. They are based on a literature theme through a website called novelengineering.org. So students, when they read a piece of literature, find out that there's a problem in the story, they then come up with solutions to solve the problem in the story. These STEM kits contain B-bots, Ozobots, Sphero Sparks, Lego, WeDos, bricks, Tinker Toys, and then, of course, the novels. We have four kits right now. They have been circulating through the Library Media Department here at Central Office to the teachers. We've had about 20 requests so far this year and have plans to continue to develop lessons based on those. As part of that STEM kit implementation, we have had professional learning that took part over the summer, gave the teachers an opportunity to explore the lessons, explore the resources and materials, and again, the feedback on these lessons and the professional learning has been very positive. We just had a meeting right before this where we talked about next steps for that particular group, and hopefully purchasing and putting more kits into circulation. We do have some staff present tonight. I have a couple media specialists and a few students. Pam Rubish is my media specialist at Rockland Woods Elementary, and Pam's gonna talk a little bit about what the feedback for her project has been.
Good evening, everybody. As John has said, my name is Pam Rubish. I'm Rockland Woods Elementary's media specialist. I've been employed by the Board of Education for 26 years now, and I am a National Board Certified Teacher of Library Media, and I'm also a Washington County Teacher of the Year, the only media specialist ever given that award. So I like to think of myself as someone who is out there really getting into things. Well, that might not sound right, but really getting into things. I love technology. I've always embraced it, and I'm blessed that the Rockland Woods community is totally in support of this new computational thinking program. They love what they see going on with their children in our school. They can stop by anytime and see the kids in little tiny groups working on the Code and Go mouse. They have the Botley out, and this is all the way down into our pre-K. We've been putting all these tools into place, and the parents are nothing but supportive. And I constantly am getting messages about, "Well, what is a Botley? What is an Osmo? What is a Cosmo?" And I'd really like to get kickbacks from all these companies for all the advertising I'm doing for all of their great products, because all I get is questions about what is going on in the media center. So I'm really blessed that right now, we have the equipment to be doing these fabulous things with this new computational thinking curriculum. So I hope that we continue to support it and continue to get these wonderful learning tools into the hands of our children. Thank you.
Next, we have Lynn Wilcox, who is the media specialist at Williamsport Elementary. And Lynn's going to speak about what the benefits are, she thinks, for the students who are involved in the computational learning lessons.
Good evening. I'm Lynn Wilcox, as Jonna mentioned. I had to organize my thoughts. So one of the things that I thought was really important to note is that coding and computational thinking certainly help children's natural inquiry, and I find that often, the students that are most engaged when they come into the library are those who often struggle to kind of find their place in the academic world. They kind of set all those things aside, and they're always actively engaged. And the most exciting part for me in doing the coding and computational thinking lessons is our time is up for library today, and most children don't want to leave the library, and that's very exciting. Students are also given a wide variety of tools and resources, as Jonna noted in her presentation. It really helps build their growth mindset and change their conception about coding and computational thinking. A lot of kids will say to me, "Ms. Wilcox, I can't do this. This is way too difficult. This is way too challenging." And some of the tools that have been provided to us help kids realize that they're able to tackle some things that they wouldn't normally try or wouldn't normally attempt to do. So that's also very exciting. These units and materials also provide students access to materials that they always see in stores or they see on TV, but I often have kids say to me, "Well, I don't have enough money for these materials or these items." So I love it when I get to come to library, because I have a chance to be able to use some of these things, and I'm saving up my allowance money so I can get, you know, a Sphero. Or kids are always asking me, "Where did you get this? Where did you get that?" And there's just a lot of energy and excitement and momentum for kids, and I think it certainly helped with just allowing equitable use for all children across WCPS. And I'm really excited and happy to be part of this group and Jonna's leadership. This is my third year in the library, and I just think it's a very exciting time, and I'm glad to be part of this process and share my experiences with you.
Next, we have a student and a parent from Williamsport Elementary. We have Leslie and Hayden Evans. Unless they wanted to ask, how has your child reacted to being part of the computational thinking lessons?
She has absolutely loved it. It's what she talks about all the time, and often asks for us to purchase these things for her at home. In fact, when she was in kindergarten at Rockland Woods, Osmo was a favorite, and we have several of those activities for that, and I'm sure Sphero will be next on the want list.
Hayden, what do you like best about the lessons that Mrs. Wilcox has been teaching?
I get to see the Spheros and other robots work. And it's fun trying to do new things for it.
Awesome, thank you. I'm sure Mrs. Wilcox has really had you doing a lot of things with the technology. We also have a lot of students here from Sharpsburg Elementary, and Tracy Hess. Tracy, will you introduce your students and just have them share a couple experiences?
I'm Tracy Hess, like she mentioned, and I teach part-time at Sharpsburg Elementary and part-time at Fountain Rock Elementary. So I have, if you'd like to stand up, Andrew Snook from Fountain Rock Elementary. He's a fifth grader. Addie Williams from Sharpsburg Elementary. She's in third grade. And then I have Abraham Denham, fifth grader from Sharpsburg, and Iri Lochner, who is also a fifth grader from Sharpsburg Elementary, and Mr. Barrett Shoemaker back here, who is in fourth grade from Sharpsburg Elementary. So we were just chatting in the room, waiting for our turn here at the meeting, and they want to share some of their favorite things that we've been covering in the library lately, and some of the things they've learned and struggles they've faced and aha moments that they've had. I'm gonna just go in the back and work my way forward. Andrew, or Barrett, what do you want to share about coding in Sharpsburg?
I want to share that the Spheros, I like that they have the joystick, 'cause if they didn't have the joystick, I would get very confused. And it's really fun with the joystick, 'cause and hold at the same time, because you don't know where it's gonna go, but at the same time, you can also predict where it's gonna go.
Abraham, what have you learned most with coding this year?
Well, sometimes it can be complicated, but after all your hard work, it finally turns out, and it works nice.
Andrew, what's your favorite thing to use so far this year?
The Code and Go mouse, because of the trial and error.
So there's a lot of problem-solving that goes on with these robots. We run into snags, and then they work to figure them out. Addie, what do you like best about coding this year?
I like that you get to find out where the robot's going to go, and it may not always turn out the way that you want it to, but it might sometimes turn out the way that you want it to.
That's called debugging. That's our vocabulary word for that. And Iri, what would you like to share about coding this year?
Binary code is where ones and zeros where you use commands in the storage unit and computers.
We just did binary coding yesterday. Thank you, Jonna, for letting us share.
Well, I want to thank everybody for coming this evening. Board members, certainly if you have any questions, I'm sure the team and students would love to answer those. We've had computational thinking kind of sprinkled throughout the school system, just maybe gifted a talented program, maybe a one-off program here or there. So this is our first year that we've rolled out computational thinking, coding, almost a different language, so to speak, across our entire system, pre-K to five is what's represented here tonight. I want to thank all of our media specialists, especially some of our leaders. I know Pam's been doing various technology things for many years. Appreciate the Sharpsburg and Rockland students here, Fountain Rock students here tonight to help us out and to share a little bit. I think it's very exciting to hear students that are excited. So with that, I'd certainly encourage you to ask any questions you might have.
I was curious, if I could ask this, how much do they cost if you want to get one for home?
A lot of money.
What's a lot of money?
Like $50.
How much?
$50.
$50?
It depends on the device, and it depends on the quantity in which we're purchasing them, because obviously, we can get some bulk discounts. But the Code and Go mice are usually, are the cheapest. They're around $30, $30 to $50. Everything else is a little bit more than that, but, you know, at the basic level for the pre-K, we're talking probably $50 per set. So.
$50, that's just raking leaves a few times, right?
I got to go to a first-grade class the other day, and they got a grant from WCPS Education Foundation, and they had bots, and the children were programming them to go different places. They had to find a spot on the map, and then they had to code it to get, it was wonderful. I had such a good time. They were enjoying it, they were engaged, they were working together. It was great. I loved it.
Thank you.
Mrs. Fisher?
I heard a term a little bit earlier, and I'm wondering about a definition. Somebody used the term "digital citizenship." Can someone explain it?
Digital citizenship has a lot of different components, but at the basic level, it is making sure that our students are prepared to participate legally, ethically, and socially within the digital environment. So we teach them a lot about cyberbullying, about making sure that they cite their sources, and that they evaluate their information, and that, you know, that they're kind, and that they don't put too much information out there to make them unsafe.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I have a question. Does this only take place in library media?
No, the computational thinking lessons that came from the grid that I showed tonight are occurring within library media. The STEM kit can be borrowed by any classroom teacher at the elementary level, and they're usually used in the math and science area.
And we did a standards crosswalk to see where we weren't covering specific things already in our science and mathematics, because there's certainly this type of thinking included in science and mathematics in the elementary. So what we have in the media sort of rounds out the approach, so that the students would have access to all of the standards.
Now, I was asked some time ago, and I didn't know a whole lot about it until tonight, I mean, I'd heard of it, but some retired elementary teachers, long retired, the question to me was, as a board member, is this computational learning, if it's done in math class, interfering with the traditional math instruction, or, you know, math facts and that type of thing? I didn't have an answer.
I would say no, you need both. And that's really the change in the focus in the standards, is the ability to critically think, to evaluate problems, problem solve, and know the algorithms to solve. So you need all of it to be able to do this kind of design and thinking design.
I would agree. That's what they asked me.
The students' comments tonight about problem-solving, debugging, some of those things, even the interest in working on this, it is, I mean, you can look at it as a toy, but it's really a tool, and it's gonna be something, you go to a manufacturing company or someplace like that, you're just seeing a larger, one of these things going down, the manufacturing aisle, working and things, and it's been programmed, probably a lot more expensive than $50. But our students are well on their way here at pre-K level through five, working on computational thinking, and just a whole new language and a way of thinking, and I think it's gonna be very important for the future. So I'm very appreciative, again, to our media specialists, to our students, to our parents, and the support that we have for this effort. We're gonna continue- and the support that we have for this effort. We're gonna continue to expand it. So thank you very much. Thank you, students. Our second report, or next report tonight is the school counseling update. Every year, we try to bring you an update on school counselors. Appreciate the support from the community, people that were advocated on behalf of the counselors and counselor ratios, the board. You know, we've talked about a lot of this before. We're certainly challenged by budget issues and things, but we're always seeking ways to support our counseling department. And at this time, I want to turn it over to Dr. Palmer and Robin Handler to give us a brief update on the counselors.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Michael, we are here to share an update on school counseling and we have Robin Handler, our supervisor of counseling, to share this evening.
Thank you. Washington County's school counselors take pride in how the role from guidance counselor to school counselor has evolved to align with school-wide student achievement goals. School counselors work to support a safe learning environment and address the needs of all students through prevention and intervention programs that are part of a comprehensive school counseling program. There are 20.1 elementary, 13.4 middle school, 20.5 high school counselors, and three counselors at Antina McHanamet. There are four social workers assigned to work with non-special education students through the Office of School Counseling. Three social workers support students at the elementary and middle school and one social worker is assigned to work with students at Marshall Street Job Development Center. School counselors are master-level educators who are trained to identify the developmental needs of students. School counselors create comprehensive school counseling programs that are designed to nurture future focused mindsets from pre-K through 12th grade. Counselors remove barriers to academic achievement by providing solution-focused strategies to help improve student behaviors, attendance, and social development. Counselors are the first responders to crisis situations that require responsive short-term interventions and coordination of services with mental health providers. School counselors support the needs of the whole child by providing students with individual and group planning, addressing their academic career and social emotional needs. Counselors understand and respond to the challenges presented by today's diverse student population by providing students with coping strategies, emotional support, family interventions, and consult with parents, teachers, and administrators. Elementary school students are beginning to develop their academic self-concept and feelings of competence and confidence. Middle and high school students are beginning to explore their interests, skills, and talents in relationship to their academic achievement in preparation for post-secondary success. School counselors deliver monthly classroom lessons addressing social-emotional learning, managing emotions, study skills, stress management, and effective communication. Goal-setting and managing transitions are skills addressed in both classroom and small group settings. High school counselors assist students and parents in navigating post-secondary options, including college and technical school admissions, high-stake testing, scholarship and financial aid application process in preparation for a competitive job market. School counselors are advocates for all students, providing indirect services by collaborating and consulting with teachers, parents, administrators, and our community resource providers. Counselors deliver responsive services, including short-term counseling, with the intent to stabilize the student. The counselor refers students and families to community-based providers who treat mental health issues that require long-term support for suicide ideation, substance abuse, anxiety, and depression. Counselors are also members of the student support team, student assistance team, PBIS teams, and coordinate parent-school meetings. In addition, they develop functional behavior assessments, coordinate 504 plans, make home visits, attend meetings with the Department of Social Services, Juvenile Services, and serve as the liaison between the school and mental health providers. School counselors ensure handle with care notifications are shared in conjunction with trauma-informed supports for students. During the 2018 legislative session, the Maryland General Assembly adopted the Maryland Safe to Learn Act of 2018. The mental health service coordinator will coordinate existing mental health referrals in collaboration with the Health Department, Department of Social Services, Mental Health Authority, and other mental health entities to provide mental health counseling and ensure that students who are referred for mental health services obtain the necessary treatment. The coordinator will maximize external funding for mental health and wraparound services to students who exhibit behavioral concerns such as hopelessness, known drug use, suicidal gestures or statements, and known gang activity. Wraparound services include mentoring, tutoring, crisis intervention, substance abuse prevention and treatment, legal aid, and academic and career counseling. Heather Williams and I are serving as the mental health coordinators. We are currently applying for funding through the Safe to Learn School Grant and planning professional development opportunities for counselors and teachers in the spring and summer to address topics such as trauma-informed care, substance abuse prevention, and behavioral interventions. Our middle and high school student assistant teams receive ongoing training. Safe Talks, suicide alert trainings will be offered for WCPS teachers and staff throughout the school year and summer. Counselors are a vital part of creating a pre-K through 12th grade belief in endless possibilities if you work hard and persevere. At the elementary school, students explore the world of work through Paws and Job Land, an interactive tour of 100 careers. Many elementary school counselors host career fairs and cafes, as well as visits to Hakers Town Community College and other community partners. Middle school students are able to explore career opportunities in the U.S. by viewing Road Trip Nation virtual interviews. Naviance planning and career awareness tools provide opportunities for career and personal assessments to identify strengths and talents related to school and career planning. All seventh grade students will participate in the Career Exploration Day to interact with our business leaders and learn about careers in the career pathways they are interested in exploring. As eighth graders, students will learn from business leaders through the Maryland Business Roundtable Program. Additionally, middle school counselors work with teams at their school to also coordinate career days and career cafes. Counselors meet with all students in ninth through 12th grade to develop individual plans for the future. The advisement process continues throughout the student's high school experience. High school students are invited to visit colleges, universities, technical schools, and local business employers to learn about the skills they need to prepare for the future. School counselors are vital in building relationships and cultivating a safe and inviting school for all students. A comprehensive school counseling program that addresses the academic, social, emotional, and career needs of all students is critical to student success. Thank you. And thank you to the counselors who are here this evening. And I especially want to thank our advocates who spoke this evening as well.
Do you have questions this evening?
I've noticed a couple other terms in these slides, excuse me. On the third from the last slide, the College of Career Readiness with the elementary K to five, it uses the term executive functioning for K to five students. What is executive functioning for?
We have a classroom lesson that address executive functioning skills, which include impulse control, protective factors, communication, how you might deal with a situation in a conflict with students, decision-making, self-control. And we actually talk about all of those executive functioning skills, K through 12, but especially in classroom lessons, elementary and middle school.
Okay. And then in the middle school, the next slide, it said the counselors work with all students to develop soft skills?
And those are the soft skills. Those are the soft skills that our business community speaks to in terms of students being prepared for employment and in all, in all opportunities, including social skills, again, being able to communicate, control your emotions, and dealing with a conflict situation peacefully. So those are all the soft skills, some of them that we, you know, start in preschool and then develop and practice. And hopefully, students will build those soft skills and social skills as independent citizens.
Thank you very much.
I have a question.
On the first page where you outline the counselors' assignments, it says social workers, non-special education, three. Exactly what does that mean?
There are four school counselors who are assigned to schools through the Office of School Counseling funding. So they, so they're at elementary schools and middle schools through the, through the office, through our school counseling funding.
This would be as opposed to social workers that are working in our summit program that are actually paid through special education funding. So these are actually working directly with the counseling department.
Hi, question for you. On the very first page, when we were talking of counselors, you list elementary, middle, high school, social workers. How many of these counselors are full-time?
I'd be happy to actually break that down and give you all the schools that have full-time counselors and part-time counselors. And there are, you know, I can share that with you.
That'd be good. And how is it determined what schools get a full-time and part-time counselor?
We determine that by school size, the size of the school. Traditionally, if a school had a minimum of 350 students, we assigned a full-time counselor. And also, we look at schools that might have high, free, reduced student list title. One school's various factors go into that decision.
Do the high schools tend to have more than one counselor?
And some, most high schools do, but not all.
Okay. And are they usually the ones that are, are they full-time?
The full, we have one high school that has 1.5 school counselors. The others have at least one school counselor or, you know, depending on the enrollment. And I will be, you know, immediately following. I will share that with you, that breakdown.
Do they, do they try to meet with, is there like a schedule that they try to meet with each student a couple times a year? Or is it just kind of like if they just filter into the office? How's that determined?
Well, I believe that both. There are responsive counseling sessions for those who might present an immediate need, but also school counselors meet with every student during the advisement process when they choose courses for the next year and, you know. And so I think it also depends on the level in terms of the frequency of meeting with individual counselors. And currently, the counselors who meet, have seniors are meeting with all students individually to make sure that they are prepared and the door of opportunities open for wherever they're choosing to apply. In effect, all of our schools are participating in College Application Week events this whole month. So they might be meeting individually with students and then small groups as well.
I'm not familiar with counseling in middle and elementary schools because I spent my whole career at the high school level. But it seems to me, looking back, that the high school counselors were always engaged with test, being in charge of testing, being in charge of AP, not AP testing, but SAT testing, being in charge of planning the schedules and so forth. It seems to me they didn't have a lot of time for, to help students with social, emotional needs, like you say here. So is that a wrong observation on my part or?
I think that testing responsibilities are a team responsibility, not only the school counselors, but a team in a school. And there are, and there are other functions in terms of testing that a counselor takes on in terms of interpretation, encouraging students, test-taking strategies, and stress management. But in terms of the facilitation and organization, it is one of the roles that counselors do assume.
And the elementary ratio, 20.1 counselors for 10,047 students, that's about one counselor for every 500 students in the elementary grades and so forth. That, I realize money, funding is a big part of it. I understand that. But if people are out there listening who can do something about that, we need help with that because of all the problems we're facing with the elementary students and so forth. What with the opioid crisis and behavior problems and this type of thing, that's, that's just not enough. One, one for every 500. And some schools, as we've heard this evening, don't even have full-time counselors. And I'm not blaming that on anybody. You know what I'm saying. I mean, you know, it's tragedy. I want to thank Robin, Dr. Palmer, and all the counselors that stayed and have been part of some of our PBIS programs and character programs are a big part of that. I had the opportunity to participate just for a few minutes in a counselor workshop today with elementary counselors primarily. And they were working on how can they help with some of our children that have severe behavior challenges during the short period of time I was there. I don't know what else they might have covered today. But our counselors do a great job. They spend a lot of time helping our students be successful and we're grateful for those that we have. Obviously, we wish we had more resources to support them than to support our students. But thank you for the presentation.
Thank you very much.
Our last presentation for superintendent's report. Every year, we provide you with a summer learning program report. And Dr. Palmer, Dr. Akers, and Mar Hanks are here to share a little bit about some of the things that happened this summer as far as student learning, so.
Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Michael. We are absolutely just delighted this evening to share with you just a brief summary of the many efforts that were provided to our students, our families, community, and even our staff members this summer. The theme really was about access and opportunity. We wanted to provide access and opportunity to students, community, staff members, families, so that we could enhance and really expand learning opportunities for our students. It really is through a collective resources of our county that we were able to magnify the literacy efforts to integrate math, technology, engineering, sciences, to offer opportunities for thousands of students this summer, as well as their families and hundreds of teachers. So we really do have a lot to celebrate this evening. You'll see on the presentation, a second here, 89th graders participated in a program, the STEM camp, which, based on what you saw with what's happening in computational thinking with our elementary students, to see our high school students in the fields. They're working on robotics, drone flight. I can't begin to explain it to you. If you want additional information, I'm happy to get it to you. I may not be the resource. We had eight advanced placement environmental students, science students, preparing for advanced placement course by doing some field research using the resources right here in our county. We have the outdoor school. We have the Potomac River. So they had some great experiences there. And that also dipped all the way down into our elementary students that were offered a special camp that integrates science with the arts. And so it was a great opportunity for students. We want to recognize that we have lots of opportunities in the summer to enrich our students and not just try to remediate. Now, I could go on with a long list of the things that happened, but to highlight a few, we wanted to celebrate that last year, we introduced a digital means to provide access to books and resources to our students. We saw across the board- We saw across the board an increase in usage this summer to celebrate. You'll see that we have a digital magazine. We had 3,000 downloads of those magazines, of students accessing those throughout the summer. We also have capstone interactive books, or just what that says, interactive books. These flip, they turn, the pages flip. They can interact with the pages. There may be a video embedded in the text to engage students. You can see there over 12,000 times those books were accessed throughout the summer, a true celebration. And so again, all of those numbers are an increase from last year. I could continue again for hours with all of our efforts, but what we'd like to offer to you is just a snapshot. We pulled together a video of the efforts to magnify literacy throughout the district this summer. George, two minutes.
So with that, I think we'll move on. Not starting from the beginning.
Okay, go ahead, Dr. Palmer.
So hopefully, you were able to get the gist of the love of reading and the love of learning that was happening in our schools this summer. So at the elementary level, we were able to support students in their summer learning programs at every elementary school with a goal to increase student readiness in both literacy and mathematics. Our Title I elementary schools provided summer school for four weeks, while non-Title I schools provided that instruction for three weeks. We had 1,022 students with a 74% attendance rate. Additionally, all of our students had the opportunity to participate in the summer reading initiative, which you saw some pictures of on our screen, in which we had 233 students read a total of 14,000 books, which is pretty impressive. We were able to pair the bookmobile with a meal machine, which allowed our students to choose books as they were provided lunch. Additionally, each elementary school has provided time and resources to provide our kindergarten readiness camp. And that allowed our youngest students an opportunity to come to school, meet their teachers, learn about school, reduce those first-day jitters for both students and parents, and allowed them to have success for that first day of school.
This year, we started a new summer school model for middle schools. The program was four weeks long, beginning on July 16th, and was held at E. Russell Hicks Middle School. Each middle school identified and invited students who could benefit from catching up in reading and math skills. Elementary schools helped identify and invite incoming sixth-grade students. We were happy that we filled 176 of the 180 seats that we had and fairly pleased with the attendance rate of 76, over 76% in this voluntary program. Each day of summer school, middle school students spent two and a half hours in lit camp to improve their literacy skills, one hour in math classes that used a lot of new hands-on manipulatives to teach the concepts and skills that will help students be successful in math this year. And students had an hour in self-selected, fine arts, physical education, or technology classes. High school summer school was five weeks long, and most classes were held at Washington County Technical High School and Antietam Academy. And we offered a few classes at satellite locations. The classes started on June 25th. We again held our transition programs at North Hagerstown High School and South Hagerstown High School. And we added a transition program this year to Williamsport High School. The transition program is designed to improve students' academic skills as they transition from middle school to high school. This summer, 371 students earned a high school credit in a traditional course and 301 students earned a credit in a blended course. Blended courses use a combination of classroom instruction and online instruction. In total, 672 students earned a high school credit over the summer. We offered 20 high school courses this year. Seventy-seven students earned a physical education credit. Ninety-seven students earned a health and life skills credit. And 48 students were able to graduate in 2018 by passing a required course in summer school. So those were our summer learning programs for 2018. We're thankful to the teachers and administrators who made the programs possible. And of course, the parents who often got up early to either get their kids on the bus or drive their kids to the programs. And with that, we're glad to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions?
Just, just out of curiosity, I see the phys ed and health and life skills. Is this done, were these offered so these kids can get these classes before they get to high school?
Yes, in most cases, yes. Well, not necessarily before they're in high school, but, but either while they're, you know, so in between the ninth and 10th grade, some of the students take the help.
So we're basically, it's not, this is not to be critical, so I apologize ahead of time. But it's because, for all intents and purposes, they need to get these because the way the schedules are laid out, in a lot of cases, they can't get them any other way. Does that?
It's usually because they want to take a very high number of AP classes, yes.
Okay. So the students are opening up slots in their schedule, their normal schedule, when they get back to school to pick up additional coursework. It's what, I think this is what we traditionally have seen, so.
Did the high school summer school? It used to be six weeks long. Looks like it's only a month here.
It's five weeks long. I don't remember it being six.
It may have been six weeks at one time. I think we generally need a week after school's out to get summer school up and rolling. And we had to be completed by a certain day in order for them to count as 2018 graduates. I am a little bit concerned.
Because I, I taught summer school twice. And it seems to me, we went into early August, started. Of course, school got out later in those days. But, and how many hours a day did they go? Was it eight to one, or?
Yeah, to 1:30.
1:30?
Yeah, I think I have the time on me.
That's a lot of instruction to get in in just about one month.
Eight-thirty to 1:30.
That's a lot of instruction to get in one month if you're teaching a traditional course for a credit. I mean, wow.
Part of the charge of staff this year is to try to be even more purposeful with our summer coursework. I think high school, pretty traditional with what we've seen in the past. But in elementary and middle, I think staff's done a great job to kind of place it at the right location. Elementary, for instance, right before the school year got started. Title I, a little bit longer period of time to help summer mischelled learners. And then the curriculum that we've offered was different this year. So I appreciate all the efforts of staff to make summer school more meaningful than in the past, I believe. And we'll continue to work to refine that, so. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. That's all I have, Mr. Stafford.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Michael. Thank you.
I have a question. While we were at the last presentation, Melissa Williams, who is not able to be here tonight, who is home watching, had asked a question. And I guess my phone just didn't come up. But she had asked a question and wanted me to present it. So I'll ask if you would do the honors of answering. But her question was, what funding beyond the general fund budget is available for the Washington County Public Schools to provide the wraparound service required by the Safe to Learn Act? That would have been, I guess, when Robin Handler would have been here.
Yeah, I think right now, I would probably say very limited. We do apply for as many grants as possible for various support services. Our student services department applies for quite a few grants to help our homeless students, to help some of our needy population. You know, so there are some grants, but I'd say that's on a limited basis. Majority of the support comes from the school system. But particularly for mental health services, it's pretty limited. We do have a lot of connections with our community partners. And staff does an excellent job trying to connect students, parents with our community partners.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, next up, personnel actions. Dr. Bishop, welcome.
Good evening, Coach Sal, for Dr. Michael and elected board members. As discussed earlier in closed session, there are several staff changes for your review. So at this time, I ask for your approval of today's personnel actions.
Mr. Rattner?
I'm going to accept personnel action.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, if you care to vote. Six, nothing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Stafford, if I could, just a moment of personal privilege. I did want to note for the Boonsborough community, Dr. Hamilton has decided to move on to another opportunity that she has available to her here at the end of October. And for the months of November and December, Dr. Mike Kohanek will be the acting principal of Boonsborough High School. We've currently posted the position for Boonsborough High School. Staff will be interviewing candidates and bringing a recommendation forward to the board. And that individual, we would anticipate, would start the first of the new calendar year in January of 2018. So I did want to make that note and thank Mr. or Dr. Kohanek for his willingness to add to his duties to kind of go down and guide Boonsborough High School in the interim time period. Thank you.
Okay, reports to the boards. We'll start with Mr. Mackley. Mrs. Varek?
Curriculum instruction will meet on Tuesday, October 23rd, 10:30 a.m. in the board conference room.
Mr. Bickford?
Finance committee will meet next Tuesday, October 23rd, at 8:00 a.m. in the finance committee meeting, or operations meeting room, right.
Mr. Gassler?
Facilities will have their meeting on October 30th at 8:00 o'clock. Third floor.
Ms. Fisher?
Policy committee will also meet on October 23rd. We meet at 9:15, right next door here.
New HR meeting this month.
Okay. You have a list of future agenda items that were in your packet and so forth. There are some changes that'll be made. When will that come out in the Friday's packet, the new revised agenda? Will that come out in Friday's packet?
I don't know if we send that out in Friday's packet or not. I think we send it via email from Karen Brown at some point.
All right. There have been some changes in things that are going on at various meetings. I won't go into them now, so we'll let you get that. Again, if you have any agenda items, please see one of the members of the agenda committee to let them know that you're interested in something. And I'm sure we'll try to arrange that. Board member comments? Mr. Rattner?
Nothing tonight.
Ms. Fisher?
It's been a long, interesting day.
Yes.
Just like to thank the cafeteria workers who provide us a wonderful meal. Tonight was exceptionally, exceptionally good. It was turkey, none of us fell asleep. So thank you all very much, but we appreciate that. So on a week of celebrating cafeteria workers, thank you very much.
Hi, Yanni. A couple of times was just my age, over 70, so. Mr. Bickford?
Nothing.
I'd like to give a little update on the Washington County Public Schools Education Foundation. Since I'm the board liaison, we had a meeting last week. And the foundation director, Christina Williams, has started visiting classrooms to see the 2018 innovative grant recipients in action. And I've been going with her to some of these things. Tomorrow, we're going to the alternative school, and I'm looking forward to that. The foundation funded 18 grants totaling $15,130.47. And we have 25 mentors signed up to help in 158 volunteer slots teaching financial literacy and college preparedness curriculum in the Avid classes. We have planned two FAFSA frenzy workshops to be held at the Washington County Free Library downtown on December 1st and 2nd. And scheduled information booths at the November 2nd football games, North-South and Smithsburg at Boonsborough. Train 27 volunteers that will begin tutoring students at Pangborn and Paramount next week for the Super Readers Program. And our fundraiser, Ready, Set, Play, has been scheduled for June 1st.
Mr. Mackley?
I'd just like to say thank you to the several students who came up and spoke during public comment today. It was nice to see them advocate for what they believe in to the board.
I just want to say this, that for those listening and watching on television, citizens of this county have to realize, as I have said several times, this school system today is not the school system that I attended in the 1950s and 60s. And I still have very vivid memories. I know, can name most of my teachers that I had during elementary school. My point is that I have vivid memories of what it was like to go to school in this county. I taught then in the 70s, 80s, 90s, and the first decade of the 21st century. This school system today is not the school system that we remember from those decades. We are faced by challenges that people are going to have to recognize and are going to have to come through with, in my opinion, just speaking personally, with increased funding and so forth for guidance counselors and other needs. We have so many mandates, many of them unfunded, that we just can't handle on maintenance of effort budgets. And so I hope the people of this community who realize that Dr. Michael and his staff, and I will say this board, are trying to do everything possible to make this school system a success. So with that, meeting's adjourned.